Monday, I almost said Tuesday, Monday, April 19th, Patriots Day. And this is the Town Council Committee of the Whole, continuation of our budget meeting. Councillors present, myself, Granatoski, Bordelone, Bumgardner, Franco, Heed, Parker, and Zepary. Councillors Obree and Melenda should be joining us shortly. It is now 6:02. We have a quorum with seven councillors. I believe we have seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven councillors, correct? And we are on to new business this evening, and the new business is the continuation of the 2021-2051 FYE 2022 proposed budget. And this evening, we are beginning with Human Services, which is account 1051. And this is in your budget book. It begins on page 138. And we will start with, good evening, Mr. Trent. We will start with Councillor Bumgardner, please. You're muted, Councillor Bumgardner?
I apologize.
That's okay.
I will move the amount of $379,962 for function.
That's the wrong account.
Okay, am I on the wrong page, or?
No, that was the wrong account.
Okay, we're on account 1051. And this is, begins on page 138 in your budget book?
Bear with me one second.
Certainly. Someone's an attendee. Let me see who this is. Councillor Melenda's is here. I'm gonna promote Councillor Melenda's over. So we are currently at eight councillors, as Councillor Melenda's has arrived. It is 6:03. Good evening, Councillor Melenda. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening.
Eight. Whenever you're ready, Councillor Bumgardner.
Yes, I apologize. I was reading Human Resources instead of Human Services. I'll move the amount of $588,909 for function Human Services 1051. So move.
Second, Parker. Moved by Bumgardner and seconded by Parker. Thank you. And we have Director Fondulus with us this evening. Would you like to present your budget, Director Fondulus?
Certainly. A good evening, everyone. The Human Services budget has stayed pretty much on par with the past year. Our increase in personnel is largely due to negotiated contracts of the seven full-time employees that we currently have. Six are union, and I am the only non-union employee. We have one position that I have left unfilled. We had a youth councillor who left the department in August of 2020, and I did not fill the position because I was very well aware that we were not getting the referrals that we normally would for youth services from the schools, because the schools were doing a very different program of hybrid learning, et cetera. And so the referrals were just not coming in. And I thought it was best to hold off on hiring a second youth councillor until we had a better feel for what was going to be happening with the schools. So that position remains unfilled at this point, and I am not in a rush to fill it until I have a better handle on what's going on with referrals. So our current youth councillor, excuse me, has, I think he has presently five young children that he's working with who've been referred largely from parents who are trying to help their children with coping with what has been going on during the school year with at-home learning and some in-school learning and not seeing friends and just having an adjustment to things. But certainly, the quantity of clients that we have at this time does not warrant a second councillor. So I'm gonna wait and see what happens with the school situation, the schools being our main source of referrals for our youth services program. Let's see, the during the COVID pandemic, we had no one working remotely from our department. Everybody, it was all hands on deck five days a week, because we had donations coming in regularly, which was great. The community really stepped up to the plate, and we also had food going out on a regular basis. And everybody had to pitch in to help with that. So we were kept pretty busy throughout this entire pandemic period. I think basically that's about it. On page 138, and there is a description of how we network with other agencies. Needless to say, during COVID, we did not have people coming into our building from outside agencies. But we are gonna start that up again as soon as we possibly can, as soon as other agencies feel comfortable having people come into the building, and we will, we will work with each agency to make that happen. So that's basically it. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you. For clarification purposes, then, you have budgeted for the second youth councillor, but are not filling it until you see what is happening with the demand based on the school situation. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's completely correct, yes.
Okay, very good. And then if you do not fill that position, the money would revert to the general fund?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we will open this up then, Councillor Bordelone. You have the floor.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work during COVID. The Human Resource Department is so important when we are experiencing such the uncertainties and unknowns from food insecurity to school insecurity for students not knowing how to perform or to be in school or online even for parents. So I just want to thank you for all your hard work. I know you did say that referrals were down, and I wasn't sure if you guys were doing any Zoom counselling. I know some agencies have set up that, just like you would do a telehealth visit. Is that something that our town is currently doing?
We do have that capacity to do that. Actually, what we have found, what the councillor, excuse me, what our one councillor has found is that many of the younger children that he's working with do much better if they are seen in person. And so we have adapted our conference room to be able to have in-person sessions with the young children that are coming through. And this has worked well. We certainly go over this with their parents and suggest it as a possibility. And I don't think at this point that our councillor is doing anything remotely. I think he is meeting with everyone in person, and that has worked quite well.
Okay. I was just more looking if other people didn't feel comfortable that the option was available. And that way, the school system knows. Also, with timing and work schedules, having the availability to do a virtual session is extremely helpful sometimes.
Yes, we do have that capability, and we do suggest that, so.
Well, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I see no other hands. So we will vote on account 1051, Human Services, and the amount of $588,909. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So move unanimously, and we are at eight councillors. Let me just double check. Seven, eight, very good. Okay, thank you, Director Fondulus. Oh, we have one more account, I'm sorry. We are on to Human Services Assistance Fund. This is function 7320, and this is on page 142 in your budget book. And I believe we're on Councillor Parker.
Yes, I make a motion to move Human Services Assistant Fund number, account number 7320, the amount of $10,000. I still move.
I will second that for our purposes. So $10,000 for account 7320, moved by Parker, seconded by Granatoski. Director Fondulus, would you like to describe what this is for the public, please?
Yes, this is an account that initially we were using, part of it on the annual allocation. We were using part of it for our Child Abuse Prevention Initiative. And we have not been able to continue that during the COVID pandemic, because we could not get we could not work with the children in the schools. So our Child Abuse Prevention Initiative has been put on hold for the time being. And it was, actually, it worked out well from a fiscal standpoint, because the $10,000 allocation is being used for rent, for financial assistance, primarily rent assistance to families with children. And this has been a big help to have that source of funding available. So we do hope eventually to get back into the child abuse prevention aspect of things. But at the present time, the assistance is going solely for rent assistance.
Thank you. And just, I would like to note that Councillor Obree has arrived. It is, she arrived at 6:12. So we are at nine councillors right now for this account. And Councillor Obree, we are on Human Services Assistance Fund 7320. And this is on page 142 in your budget book, and the amount on the floor is $10,000.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here. And are there questions? For Director Fondulus? I have a question. Oh, Councillor Franco, you can go first, then I'll go after you.
Thank you.
Yep.
With this, I believe with state and possibly even federal helping out with rent assistance, is there a need for this $10,000 this year?
Well, it's hard to say at this point. The, we haven't really hit full volume as far as the number of people who may need assistance. There are hangups with other programs such as the Unite CT program that's just getting off the ground. It's necessary, mandatory that landlords cooperate on the application for assistance. Even, it's hard to imagine that a landlord would not want to cooperate, but many landlords have been hesitant or outright said they would not cooperate. So people are not able to get the assistance through that program that they might otherwise be able to. So there are glitches in other programs, so that we are never, no, it's always good to have a backup, just in case a particular client doesn't, for whatever reason, meet the criteria for another program. It's wonderful to have a variety of programs that may be of benefit, but you never are too sure until you get down into the nitty-gritty whether or not a particular program is gonna fit with a particular client's situation. So I would not want this program, this funding, this allocation to be not provided this year. I think it's important to have it available.
Yes, thank you. Because I was just wondering, is it, in a sense, would it be better to leave? Because this funding is coming from the trust, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, because I was just wondering if maybe, if it wasn't needed, or will you leave it there till the need arises, and so you can?
Yes, yes. Whenever we, whenever a social worker has a client that needs rent assistance, we look at the various programs that we have available and basically pick and choose what is the best situation for the client and what's going to also extend the funding that we have. So it's, at the present time, for instance, we have a grant from the Community Foundation of Eastern Connecticut for $5,000 for rent. We have just got a Rotary grant from the Groton Rotary for $1,000 for rent. And we try to shift to those programs as we can, when we can, to preserve this trust fund as best we can. But I think at the present time, I think we have around 3,000 remaining from the allocation for this year in this particular trust fund. And again, it's a case of seeing what the resources are that we have available for people and trying to find the best match and trying to stretch our resources as far as we can.
Right. And that was just my concern, is that if you don't actually need it, you can just leave it in the trust to grow, and hopefully
Correct.
it would grow. And that was my concern, is that you could only take, I mean, maybe you could just take it as you needed it and not take the lump sum upfront. So, all right, good to know. Thank you very much. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
You're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Long day. I just wanted to note the financing plan that this is not general fund money. This is from that trust fund. And I wanted to ask Mr. Burt and Ms. Fondulus, Director Fondulus, with the money that may be coming in, and if the town chooses with the federal dollars coming in to use it to help support rental payments for our citizens, would it be funneled through this account then? Is it possible to have this account be the avenue to distribute that money, or is this account?
It has to be separate.
Okay, so then Director Fondulus would have to have something else set up. I'm assuming it would go through Human Services, but it can't go in this one.
It's gonna be a while before we have details. We can't say that for sure yet.
Okay, but it can't be touched with this because it's trust fund money.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, so then we have Councillor Obree.
Somebody, they answered my question on the course of the conversation. I was wondering what we had. You know, the responsibility of this is actually supposed to be the town, and we were fortunate that we got these additional monies. Because the monies that Groton had ran out, and none was appropriated for it. I don't know if everybody's aware of that or not. It's probably been old, you know?
Do you have other comments, Councillor?
I'm all done. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Councillor Bordelone, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yes, and to Councillor Franco's point, if other monies do come in, you know, from the other funds, you know, maybe this fund could be used in its original form of what it was being used for before. I understand that we're not able to get into the schools currently like we were as pre-COVID. But post-COVID and during this COVID, there is a huge spike of projected abuse cases that are gonna come forward, because things are opening up and kids are back in school, and the request and referrals are possibly or potentially might go up. So I'm just wondering, is there a way to be able to duly use this fund for rental assistance, but also for what you were using it for before?
Well, the allocation that we're asking for, the $10,000 we're asking for, I think in the past, I think it was, I don't have past figures here, but I believe in the past, it was 3,000 that we applied from the total of 10,000, 3,000 for child abuse prevention, and 7,000 for rental assistance. And as I say, this year, we're applying the whole thing towards rent assistance. But certainly, as other funds become available to help with rent assistance, then we would shift away from using this account. And certainly, as the need arises for there to be an all-out effort to work with the schools and the community in general on child abuse prevention, then we will get right back into that. And whether we use this fund or whether we used our discretionary fund, I mean, we would do whatever it took to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. So it's not a, it has some flexibility, it seems.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I see no other hands. So we will vote on account 7320, in the amount of $10,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. So moved unanimously with nine councillors. And thank you, Director Fondulus, for being with us and for all your work on behalf of the community. We appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
You will.
Thank you.
All right, we are going on to Public Works. This is account 1035. I'm giving everybody a chance to get their pages turned. And we have Mr. Hanover, Ms. Leach, and Mr. Sharette with us this evening. This is account 1035 on page 112, and I believe we are on Councillor Franco.
I moved the number, oh, I meant, for account number 1035, I moved the number of $5,864,087.
Second, Heed.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Heed in the amount of $5,864,087 for account 1035. Mr. Hanover, would you like to present your budget, sir?
Yes, certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, councillors. Greg Hanover, Director Public Works. This evening, we have Stacy Leach, who's my administrative supervisor, who was really the one to put all the details of this budget together. And I also have Bob Sharette, my Fleet and Facilities Manager. This year's budget represents a decrease from last year's of $139,012, or 2.3%. Personnel services are down just over $38,000, and operating expenses are down just over $100,000. Just some of the highlights for personnel, there's no changes proposed for personnel. The decreases are primarily due to how we calculate the snow overtime using the previous five years and coming up with an average. And we also had several retirements of some senior employees, and they're replaced by workers coming in at entry-level salaries. So we realized some savings there in salary. Operationally, we had a $66,000 decrease in utilities, mainly due to locking into the lower heating oil price for the year. But we've also had some energy efficiencies realized, like the gas boiler we put in at the highway garage and things of that sort. We also have paid off our loan to Eversource for the LED streetlight conversions this past December. So that line name has been decreased by $64,000 to represent that loan repayment. And I do have in building maintenance, a couple of larger repair items. There is a $27,000 increase associated with re-roofing the Esca Point Beach bathhouse. This is a $12,000 item. Those shingles are old and brittle, and I think after every windstorm, we're down there repairing them. And we are getting leaks into the buildings. We want to get that taken care of. And we also need to put in a radon mitigation system. Basement and vault area of the town hall annex, we have very high radon levels there, and that's a $15,000 item. These projects are small, so they don't rise to the level of a CIP. So we're just putting them in our operations budget. We're also looking at replacing some loader forks for our large payloaders up at the transfer station, which is a $22,000 equipment replacement cost. And there's a fee for the MS4 permitting that's due every two years of $14,000. So that is also an increase. One of the things you'll note is a change for this year that I'm proposing is a restructuring or change in the user fees at the transfer station. In FY19, there was a large increase in the permit fees to offset some of the operational costs. The annual permit went from $80 to $140, which is quite a jump in one year. We did get a lot of complaints about that, and they still, we, you know, feel those complaints to this day. So I kind of took a look at some of the surrounding communities to figure out what is other people are charging, and found that, you know, we're one of the higher communities in our fee structure. So what I'm proposing is to lower the annual permit fee to $100, and also adding a fee for senior discount, if you will, for those 65 and older. We've never had that before. We do get a lot of seniors requesting that, so we're proposing a $75 annual fee for 65 and older. And then the day pass would drop by $5 to 20. Trip tickets would go from $60 to $50. Appliances would drop $5, and tires would go up a couple bucks, so that everything's in a multiple of fives. Since the expenditures aren't changing at the transfer station, they're remaining essentially the same. We will be lowering our revenue that we receive on these fees by about $40,000. So I just want to point that out. But I think it's, you know, it's a reasonable fee structure, and would look forward to answering any questions on that. So I think that's about it. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanover. I wanted to speak to the issue of the permits. Just let me get this thing started here. I am pleased that you've reevaluated. I know when we, when we first implemented the change, there was a lot of discussion back and forth, and we heard a lot from the community about the increased fees. So thank you for reassessing and reevaluating and coming back to us with what you think would be most appropriate. I also wanted to comment that I do like the idea of having the senior, I don't know if you should say senior citizen or not, but the 65 and older pass at a reduced fee. I think that's a good feature to do. So thank you for reassessing and coming back to us with what you feel is best. And just a question on the roof for the beach house, $27,000 seems high. Is there something special about that roof? Because if I'm recalling it correctly, it doesn't seem like it's a really big building. I was just curious, do we have to have special kinds of anchoring or special shingles or something that would require that to be higher than what I would normally expect, but?
Or, no, the 27 is actually for those two projects together.
Okay.
The Esca Point is actually only $12,000, and the town hall annex radon is 15, so together, those two are 27,000.
Thank you, I'm Miss Red. I apologize.
That's okay.
Forifying that.
Yep.
Very good. Councillor Franco?
Thank you. I can agree with the mayor that we did receive a lot of citizens' input regarding the fees at the dump, I mean, at the transfer station, excuse me. So I'm wondering, is in your budget, it was brought up by Director Landry, that in our audit for finances, that they had suggested putting a camera down at the transfer station to for security of finances. Is that in your budget by any chance?
It's not specifically in there, but I do have that recommendation from the audit firm, and we will be implementing that. And we have a camera system up there, so it wouldn't cost very much at all to add that.
Okay. So let me clarify just a couple of things regarding the transfer station, because I have received communications regarding this. To clarify, there's not supposed to be any commercial businesses during dumping there, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if there was a guy who did some side jobs, well, it's business to do dump runs for people. Is that allowed?
If he's coming in, if he has a residential permit and he's coming in with his residential truck, we can't stop him, you know, even though we know that it might be some type of business. But maybe, you know, I'll let Stacy answer that, because she actually used to work up there, and she might have a better answer to that, Stacy.
Yes, Councillor Franco, what we would do is we would issue something called a letter permit. So if you did not personally have a truck, and you were having some work done, and you wanted to hire somebody, we would list, issue a letter permit that said that the waste was originating from your home, and it would involve your name. And then they would pay for the load when they come to deliver it. Or if you happen to have an annual permit, we would use your annual permit number. But again, that's with someone being honest. I mean, if somebody's coming in all the time, that's from Groton as a resident and has a side job, we may not be aware of that.
Okay, yes, because I have had people reach out to me and send me communications regarding this with photographs of people and things of that nature, and I've heard quite a bit about it. And one other thing, is there a possible way to get, last I knew, the annual permit, you had to get up at the town hall annex? And one other thing, is there a possible way to get the, the, last I knew, the annual permit, you had to get up at the town hall annex. Is there a way that we can get that at the transfer station?
Well, the, I don't, Greg, I can answer this, I guess, is that the annual permit is done through a cash register and is done by an office administrator, an office worker, as opposed to an equipment operator that might take the money at the transfer station or log in the, the report. So we don't have that capability up there. And in the interest of trying to move the line along, that's what we try to do. We do offer it by mail. So if somebody wanted to get it and couldn't come to the annex, we could mail it to them if they were to send us the information.
I see. It, it just seems that if you're coming to the transfer station, and it may be a Saturday, and you're thinking, I'm going to come next week as well, so let me just get an annual pass. It'd be just easy for somebody to do it right then and there. So that's my, I just think it's maybe a matter of convenience for somebody. And if somebody had to go for a day pass and they just want to pay the, your proposed $20, would that, they could pay that at the transfer station, correct?
Correct. And that's an unlimited number of trips. That's not just one trip. That would be, if you could make five trips in a day, you could do that.
All right. And then, I think that's it for this moment. I'll hold the rest. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Obray.
Yes, I want to commend you. I think you've done a great job on your budget, but I still have a question. On 10359, what is the reg- residential transfer that's gone up considerably?
Let me look at that. Hold on. Was it 1039? That's the transfer station.
Oh, that is the transfer station?
Yeah, and most of that is represented by the, the equipment that we're looking to purchase, the forks for the loader, so that we can move the dumpsters around. That, that's primarily the increase there.
Okay, I think you said that before, so I apologize for
No, no problems.
reading that. I'm very happy to see the fees go down a little bit on the, on the dump. I thank you for doing that, you know, to really take the time to analyze it and give us, you know, the direction to take it down is great. Nice job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
I yield the floor.
I already took the floor. Counselor Bordelain, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have a question too. I just know from the few times that I've used it and had to use a day pass, you know, in, in the world where just most people don't use cash anymore, is there a move towards having an availability to be able to pay with a, I mean, there's a ton of options now, but definitely be able to use a, you know, your debit card or some type of form of that so that you could expedite it?
Yeah, I would love to do that. We've been working with our finance department and IT and figure out, and I think the town as a whole is looking at, you know, how to do some of these things, you know, using a credit card or debit card or any of those type of things.
Yeah, because, I mean, most people don't know the menu, right, like of what each thing costs. And after I moved and you have certain items that cost this and electronic costs that, you get there and you open up your wallet and you're trying to dump all this stuff off appropriately and not have to come back another day because you have your day pass. And then you have to run to get more cash because everything, some, the day pass is one thing, but certain items cost a different fee, you know, and that's not something that, you know, everyone usually has readily available, you know, in their wallet.
Right.
And I just think it would really expedite it. I mean, there's so many different ways that you can have little, you know, things down there, that electronic devices to be able to pay. So that was just one of the things. I was wondering if we were moving towards that. I think it makes sense and it would be more efficient. And I think it would increase the use and accessibility. Also, with the day pass, if you purchase a day pass in our town, so, you know, you decide, oh, I got to get rid of this stuff on Saturday or whenever. And then you're like, you know what? Wow, I really should just get the, the, the season pass. Are you able to take your receipt from the, from the day and have that as part of your payment towards your, your seasonal pass?
I'll let Stacy answer that question.
No, we don't credit back, um, we don't credit back that.
Is there a reason that we couldn't?
Well, it's different operating hours. And it comes out of a different register, so it would probably already be deposited and then have to do a refund. I think that would have to be a question that we could work with finance on.
Okay.
Possibility.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, I was just wondering, I mean, if the person goes down and has put money into it for the day, then it, you know, and, you know, they went down there, it could be applied possibly, you know, if it doesn't work, obviously. I was just curious if it was a possibility. And I also agree with Counselor Franco, it would be much easier. Most people are, are paying the day pass, but they would like the year, and when they go on that particular day, they can't purchase the season pass. Yeah, John, you want to say something?
I was just going to say, talking to Cindy about that here, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be too hard to figure something out. I'm very much in favor of that.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I think I've had a few people reach out to me about that, and I, I think it would be really convenient if you, it's, it's kind of a model we're using for residents, obviously, you know, to, to be able to do such, so. But I do, I do appreciate how you guys have brought down the cost for seniors and the different changes you have made. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Okay, question about salary reimbursement, that 5119 on page 116 of our budget under the adjusted for 2021 and 2022 request. Can you explain what those are?
Yeah, that's the salary reimbursement for our school construction manager from the, the school project, the bond project.
Is that, is that the person that's under this, sustainability project manager?
Yes, correct.
All right, so does that include the benefits, or is that in the separate line item on a different page? Because it amounts different.
Well, the amount from 21 would be his salary then, and then 22 would be assuming that, you know, wage increase. And looking at, I'm assuming that's just his wages.
Right, because when I'm looking at it, if that's the line item, and I'm looking on the other side on page 117, that's 94,592, but then in here is a subtraction of 101,829. So I was just trying to figure out what the difference is.
I think Mr. Burt may have something.
Yeah, that number does include social, social security. However, because we do benefit separately, we do tart the school account for it. It's just not in this budget.
Right, so, but that difference is supposed to be, what's the difference? If it's 94?
FICA.
Okay. Right, so that's basically zeroed out.
His salary is zeroed out, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other first time speakers before we go to second time? Counselor Franco.
So with the new, um, transfer station proposed fees, will that come to the council as a separate issue on our agenda? Or if we pass this budget, will that, that change it? Will that be sufficient?
It'll be a separate thing with that. We call it, Greg, that, that, you know, where the council's also the authority or whatever it is, you have to properly notify, notice that one.
Oh, the GRRA?
Yeah, it'll have to go through theirs, isn't that correct?
Yeah, I'd have to check on that. I'm not sure if it does or not for, for the fees there.
You can get that answer. That'd be great for, I'll send it out to the council.
All right, I'm just curious, does, did we pass it tonight? Would that just go into effect whenever, Mr. Hanover? Do you care about it, or does it have to come out? I was just curious. And then also, um, so under the sustainability, I also have it marked in my book as Counselor Parker had brought it to our attention. It has this, on page 117, it says sustainability project manager, and for the year 2022, it does say that there will be one position. Although on the other page, the dollar amount was taken out. Am I missing something? It is mowing the lawn outside, so I didn't hear some of what you said earlier. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, the, the, the person in that position, you know, that's, that's his title, but he is actually, you know, is the school construction manager, and that's what he's doing basically full time right now. So the, the 101,000 that you see for reimbursement is the school bond project reimbursing this, this fund for his salary and the social security. You know, the, the school project, you know, it's coming, it'll be coming to a close in September. There'll still be some closeout paperwork, state audits. So there will be, you know, some substantial work, you know, going through, through this year. And then, once the school project is done, you know, this position will be basically sunsetted out of Public Works.
Okay, I'm sorry to make you repeat that because I did hear parts of it when he was driving right under my window, and I'm like, I apologize. Thank you very much.
And any other first time councilors before we go to second time? Counselor Obray?
I just had a question. I was thinking, since we're talking garbage, do we have somebody here from the mafia so it's going to break our hands if we don't do this right? I see this guy looking a little tough.
I can't see on, on, you know, recorded video.
You can't see it? You can't see that?
I can't see anything on recorded video.
Oh. Okay, sorry about that. Just a little humor here. I know the mayor loves it. Bye now.
Counselor Bordelain, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, one more question regards to the day pass. Is that a certain size vehicle that is allowed?
It is. I don't know exactly though. It's like, I think it's a pickup truck. Maybe a trailer up to a certain size, 12 foot or something like that. But if you get like a big huge box truck, then you go into the trip ticket. Am I correct in that, Stacy?
Yeah, so something like a U-Haul, a box would be a trip ticket.
Right, because that's a little confusing, because if you can take your pickup truck in unlimited for $20 for the day, but if you're moving and you have a small modest box truck that you're trying to condense because of manpower and back labor, and you want to put those things that would be five dump runs in the back of your pickup truck, it's just, I don't know, I just, I think it's the same, isn't it, in the end, the quantity that you bring?
Well, I think part of it is to also try to control the, the commercial use of it because a lot of contractors would have something that's equivalent to a box truck like a U-Haul.
Right, I, I guess just thinking for the resident, if a resident had a pass and they can prove they're a resident, and they're trying to move, they're moving, and they have a small box truck, and they're trying to properly dispose of things without coming five times and lifting things on five times, and it's obviously not brush or anything that's commercial, it's, I don't, I just, I don't, it just seems confusing why it would be more than if you had, you know, your pickup truck that you brought eight times. I don't know.
I, I will, I will tell you that we really don't sell too many trip tickets and that if, usually if people call and ask, we usually discuss it with them and ask them if it's easier and cheaper for them to rent a U-Haul truck, an actual standard truck, and they usually find out that that's actually cheaper than renting the box truck.
All right. I, I guess I was speaking from the sense of if you're already moving, you have the box truck, so. But, I mean, I'm just, just, just curious of how it works. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I see no other hand, so we will vote on account 1035, Public Works, in the amount of $5,864,087. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to the sewer operating fund. This is on page 118. And this is account 2020. Begins on 118. So Counselor Heat, if you could handle sewer operating fund for us, please. And Director Landry, we are moving the financing plan number.
Can you repeat that? No.
Are we moving the total appropriation, the 6.5?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Heat?
All right, so that's on page 121, correct?
120. 121, yes, either one.
All right, so I'll make a motion to move the number 6,578,273.
Second, Bordelain.
Moved by Heat and seconded by Bordelain for account 2020, 6,578,273. Mr. Hanover?
Hey. The overall decrease in this budget is $1,112,088, so 14.5%. And I'll get into a minute why that's such a large number. But personnel services are down $9,600 and operating expenses are down 1.1 million, or just over that. There's no changes in personnel proposed. The cost increased due to the contractual salaries and benefits are being offset by a reduction in the contribution to the OPEB, which is resulting in the smaller overall, a small overall decrease in the budget. The large reduction, the operating budget of $1,102,412 is primarily due to the CIP projects. Last year, we had a project approved for 1.3 million for a major upgrade at the Gosco Pump Station, which is currently under construction. So this year's CIP was reduced by a million dollars, down to the 475,000 that was, you know, recently approved this past Saturday, actually. So that is the primary reason for the such, you know, the large decrease in this budget. You know, the sewer authority is looking at doing one of these major pump station upgrades about every other year so that we can keep the user fees about where they are without increasing them and building up our fund balance and then paying for these projects with cash rather than bonding for them. So, you know, the sewer authority has looked at the, this budget and they've approved, you know, approved it. And they don't anticipate using any fund balance or increasing the sewer user fees for this year to meet this budget. And that's it. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanover. Any questions on account 2020? This is funded mainly through sewer use fees. Counselor Obray, did you have a, there you go.
Yeah.
What is the cost right now on the sewer use? For however you calculate it?
For residential, it's $34.50 a month. And the commercial user, it's, gosh, I can't, I think it's .055 dollars per cubic foot of water used, something like that.
Per month?
Per month, yes.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Any other councilors with questions for Mr. Hanover? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on account 2020 in the amount of $6,578,273. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine councilors. Thank you. And next we have the solid waste fund. This is account 2030. And this is found on page 124 in your budget book. And I believe we are on Counselor Obray.
Let's see, you want the bottom, okay.
We want the 1567, correct, Director Landry?
1578. I'm sorry.
Director Landry, you want the total appropriation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, for total appropriation, I move the number of 1,567,617. Did I say that right?
You're fine. Is there a second?
Second, Parker.
Moved by Obray and seconded by Parker. Mr. Hanover?
Yep, this is a, the solid waste budget, which is Uh, yep, this is a, the solid waste budget, which is, uh, pretty much a pass-through budget for, um, all the haulers that bring their waste from the town to the, uh, waste energy plant now in Lisbon. We get billed from Scarf what they bring and then the, uh, we build the haulers and they reimburse us. One thing we are looking at, um, and it's kind of a new thing in this year's budget is a pilot program, um, to, um, install some, uh, trash can compactors, these are solar operated trash can compactors in downtown Mystic. You know, with the amount of visitors we're getting down there, we see a significant amount of trash and we, we keep having to put more and more cans out there. I don't know if you seen, but we actually just repainted them, I think last week, uh, we worked with the beautification committee, put out some new cans there for recycling and trash, but the, the amount of cans and, and, you know, the amount of time we spend having to pick up all the litter, it's just, um, becoming increasingly burdensome. So we're looking at, um, purchasing some units that are called Big Belly, um, which they're solar powered, uh, compactors. You, you see these in a lot of, uh, major cities, um, like New York and Times Square and there's some in, some smaller towns in Connecticut like West Hartford, I think. Madison and Guilford have some, and I think there's some in Westerly. So we're looking at getting, um, a couple of these just to see how, how they work out in downtown Mystic. You know, to hopefully kind of reduce the trash can clutter, if you will, uh, that we, we have down there. So we're looking at using a, um, there was a, a way, the, uh, change in the way Scarf awards our tran- transportation subsidy. And so we're just looking at using that funds to, to purchase these units on a trial basis. Thank you.
Counsel Board along, you have a floor?
Uh, yes, thank you, um, yes, I thank you for the efforts in getting the trash cans painted. I know at one meeting a while back, there was something that was brought up and, um, you couldn't really distinguish between the recycle and the trash and people would throw things kind of in bulk down there. And, uh, yes, Westerly does have the solar model, um, it, I think it's a great, um, to give this a whirl and I'm happy to see that it's solar operated as well, um, what does one compactor cost?
The, you know, a trash and recyclable side by side, I believe for one unit is like ten thousand dollars. So we're looking at purchasing, uh, two, two sets of, you know, one, two recycles and two, uh, trash, you know, put side by side and, and pick a couple, uh, hotspots down there where we get a lot of, uh, trash and try them there.
Perfect, I, I think it's a great idea and, uh, I think Westerly, like, as you stated, has them and I, they think they work pretty great. And, um, it seems as if, you know, you can't have someone manning trash all day, so it's only natural to have something that's kind of helping you control it. So, um, especially with it being, you know, downtown and close to the water, so it's really important, so thank you for that.
Counsel Obree?
I just said to myself, I should have written a note. I was wondering, for the, um, bathrooms down there, do you have somebody that goes down each morning to clean up down there in and around it?
Yeah, our, our custodial contractor goes there twice a day. We did find out that they were coming in not quite as early as we wanted them to, so we did move them up to go down there like between eight and nine in the morning. But they do go there twice a day.
And my understanding is that one of the biggest problems down there are the nip bottles? You hadn't heard that? Well, I was talking, and, uh, there's a woman that lives down there that does it on her own, just to help out. And she told me the biggest thing that she accumulates down there are nip bottles. But I'm just wondering if maybe this year, uh, I know, uh, we're gonna have somebody in downtown Mystic again, I believe. And maybe you could talk with the police state about just really trying to emphasize to people where the rubbish should be going. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Franco?
So, if, this is gonna cost twenty thousand dollars and in your notes here it said it's funded by a change in how Scarra awards the transportation subsidy that the town receives. Can you, can you elaborate a little bit more there?
Um, I'll let Stacy's or scare up and she understands this better than I, so I'll let her take that one, Stacy.
Sure, um, Counselor Franco, previously, um, when we had our transportation subsidy, um, for the Preston facility, the way it was set up thirty years ago was at the end of the year, a check was sent to the town and it was added into the general fund. And Scarra has changed it with the new agreement going to Lisbon, where now it's taken off of the monthly bill. So even though, you know, it's a hundred thousand dollars, if we take two thousand dollars off of that for the transportation subsidy, then that is actually going into the solid waste fund of all the member communities. So then it stays into the solid waste fund instead of going in the general fund.
Okay, and, um, so I'm very intrigued by these compactable trash cans and so putting these downtown, if they, they are successful, will actually help save on manpower hours because you'll have to go down less to clean them up and pick them up, is that correct, and empty them?
That's, that's the hope and the plan, yes. And they will need less of them as well, um, because, you know, they do compact the trash. And, and I also wanna point out, they, you, they are, uh, able to, um, you know, have artwork and stuff put on them, so they are a little bit more attractive.
And if they are successful, maybe this could be the jumping point, maybe having them in other areas of Brighton, at parks and things of that nature. Is that possibly a plan?
If they're successful, yes.
Thank you very much.
Alright, any other questions for Mr. Hanover or Ms. Leach? Okay, we will vote on account twenty thirty solid waste in the amount of one million five hundred sixty-seven thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. And next on the list is Fleet, and this is account sixty forty on page one twenty-eight. And this is Counsel Board along?
Thank you, um, I move a number of one million one hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and seventeen.
Second, Heat.
For account sixty forty, one million one hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars, moved by Board along and seconded by Heat, Mr. Hanover?
Okay, uh, the overall increase in this budget is, uh, three hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars, or fifty-five point nine percent. Primarily that is due to the, uh, the vehicles, um, that we're requesting this year, which totals four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. As you recall, last year, um, all the vehicles that we'd requested, which I think was for five hundred ninety-six thousand, was cut to zero. So, that primarily that's what the increase is due to. I just wanna kind of go through, um, the, the fleet account and, and what vehicles we're looking at replacing. Um, and also the, uh, talk a little bit about the vehicle maintenance and vehicle fuel. Our, our fleet, uh, facilities made it, our fleet guys, uh, maintain about two hundred vehicles. Everything from small sedan cars up to large pieces of a construction equipment. Uh, we maintain fifty-two police vehicles and also we service twenty-nine board of ed vehicles. We have ten hybrids and one electric car. Our inventory is estimated to be about a twelve million dollar fleet. So, you know, we have four certified mechanics up there working full time, uh, they're paid in one oh three five. So this is essentially just for the fleet itself and the, and the maintenance, the repair parts and the, the vehicle, uh, fuel use. For the vehicle that we're looking to purchase this year, there's five, five new vehicles. The first is the, a roll-off, uh, truck. This is a two thousand four Sterling and Sterling is no longer in business. This vehicle has a hundred and fifty thousand miles and this is a truck that carries the dumpsters from the transfer station up to the, uh, Lisbon waste of energy plant probably two or three times a week. You know, this, this vehicle is constantly, uh, being repaired. We've, I think, spent almost fifty thousand on this thing in the last five years. It's getting to the point where we can't even make part, or get parts, I mean, we're almost having to make parts for this thing. The, the code, the cost for this is two hundred and seven thousand, so this is probably the big ticket item in this, you know, uh, list of fleet vehicles we're looking at. The second is, we have a twenty-two-year-old, uh, small backhoe that's, um, you know, about seven years past its useful life. We're looking at purchasing, uh, trading this in and purchasing a mini excavator. You know, our guys, um, do a lot of ferry, uh, work and these little, uh, mini excavators, you see them all the time with small landscapers and even large contractors using these things now. They're like a Swiss Army knife of, of, uh, construction equipment. They're extremely useful for like doing our MS four work, where we have to go into people's yards without little disturbance and cleaning out, uh, outfalls. And just a lot of work, uh, that we can use with these things. And I know there was some discussion on Saturday about, you know, potential sharing with the city of equipment. And this cer- this piece would certainly, um, you know, probably be one of those pieces that would be, you know, able to be shared between the city and us. The third, and that was forty-five thousand dollars. And the third piece is a Toro riding mower that Parks Maintenance uses. This thing is, uh, about eight years overdue for replacement, it's a two thousand four unit. And it's getting to the point where it's difficult to, uh, keep it repaired and running. Then we have a couple of, uh, Ford F-three fifty pickups with snow plowing that, uh, roads and streets guys use. We've, uh, constantly been maintaining these things and I think we've put in over twenty-four, twenty-five thousand in each over the last five years. The frames and the floorboards all rusting out and these engines have a known problem where the block starts rusting out causing a coolant leak. And then the last thing we have is a, uh, small dump truck for Parks Maintenance that is a nineteen ninety-seven, um, and it's, you know, about twelve, uh, ten years or so overdue. And that's another one, we're constantly putting like twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, in the last five years in. So those are the vehicles, um, you know, all these, um, vehicles would be, you know, purchased with, uh, trade-in values of, uh, at the times, you know, we purchased them and, you know, we haven't purchased any Public Works or Parks vehicles in the last two years. So I think, you know, it's these, uh, pieces of equipment are long overdue. Now talk about vehicle maintenance for a little bit. Vehicle maintenance includes, you know, regular maintenance items for the light vehicles such as oil filters, tires, wipers, brakes, you know, everything that everybody gets done on their own cars. But it also includes, you know, the large construction equipment, snowplow, sanders, the street sweepers, um, those type of things, and, and when those things break, the loaders at the land, at the transfer station, you know, that's often a big ticket item. Sometimes we have to send these things out to, um, you know, equipment dealers like HO Penn and WI Clark and those places for complex repairs. And this line item, you know, pays for all that. All the bodywork that we have to have done, we send out, we don't do in-house body, uh, work. And we do repair, like it said, the board of ed vehicles, but we do bill them separately for parts and labor. The vehicle fueled, um, this request is down about a hundred thousand dollars, um, primarily cuz of the great rate that we, um, were able to lock in at for diesel and gas through our purchasing departments, cuz they're a member of a consortium and they were able to lock in, I think it's a dollar seventy-two a gallon for gas and one eighty-one for diesel, which is, which is great. So that's, you know, where the savings is there. So with that, I will stop and turn it over to any questions, thank you.
Thank you, I, I have a question regarding the, um, vehicle maintenance account, first I just wanted to say I, I'm, I'm pleased that you are, um, able to, hopefully able to purchase these replacement vehicles, um, because it sounds like you were spending an awful lot of money um, on repairs. Um, and that leads me to the vehicle maintenance account. If we're getting rid of these older vehicles that were eating so much money for repairs, you would think that the vehicle maintenance number would go down and instead it's gone up. So just wondering, um, what accounts for the increase if we're gonna have new vehicles that we won't have to sink this fifty grand into?
Okay, um, yeah, I'll probably let my, uh, Bob Shrett maybe jump in here as well, but, you know, I think, you know, those vehicles, we have spent a lot of money, but there's other vehicles we spend almost as much money on as well. Unfortunately, um, it's, it's, it's an expensive fleet and it's, you know, a lot of it is showing its age. So Bob, I don't know if you wanna add anything else?
Yes, good evening, I, I would just like to add that, um, a- all of our vehicles are in pretty rough shape. And if you look at the list of vehicles, I believe it's on page one thirty-two, all of these vehicles are due for replacement. But we're only selecting just the absolute hurting, most expensive ones that are really hurting us in the pocketbook to repair. And what we're experiencing, like every other municipality out there and every other homeowner, is problems with rust. These vehicles just aren't holding up like they're, like we would like them to or, or like they should. And the problems aren't just body rust. What we're starting to see more of is the undercarriage rust, which is the silent killer that you can't always necessarily see. And what we're, we're really starting to have a problem with is it's not the components itself, like a muffler or a shock or, or something like that. It's, it's the places where these items mount to that are rusting away. And those aren't play, aren't, those aren't parts that you can just go down to Napa or, you know, Whaling City Ford and replace, like a shock mount or upper control arm mount. You know, we're, we're stuck when that happens, we have to either fabricate something or we have to sideline the vehicle. So, um, you know, that's, that's kind of where we're at and, uh, I'll, I'll leave it there.
So then, where are we with the vehicle wash station? That has been floating out there for years and years, I don't think we ever did that, did we, Mr. Burt? Is this a result, is this what's, what's gonna, is this the result of us not having a proper vehicle wash station? Not being able to maintain the undercarriage of the vehicles or is this just natural, even if we had that wash station? Maybe this is too far off the topic, I'm just wondering if.
I mean, I certainly, the vehicle wash station would certainly help, um, you know, to be able to get the salt off of these things. But, um, you know, is it gonna solve everything, I, I don't know.
Okay, I understand the aging fleet, thank you, thank you for your answer, Mr. Shrett, I'm Counselor Parker.
Uh, Mr. Hanover, did you say five vehicles or is it six vehicles we're changing out? Cuz I'm looking on page one thirty-two and it's six, and I got confused.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, it is six, I, I, I combined on my notes here, I combined the two pickup trucks cuz they're essentially the same. Um, and I saw five, but it is six vehicles, you're correct.
Okay, alright, thank you, just one clarify, thank you, I'm done.
Counsel Franco?
Thank you. So, when you talk about the fleet and how it's aging and, you know, and I know that there's been times when we, we sort of tighten the budget on the fleet a little bit. But I am noticing like there is the nineteen eighty-seven John Deere. I mean, it's thirty-four years old and it should have been replaced ten years ago and that's a replacement cost of a hundred and sixty-five dollars. There's also another vehicle, I don't even know, PW RNS International, that's also nineteen eighty-seven. And that should have been replaced eleven years ago and that totals up for about a hundred and fifteen thousand, I mean, three hundred and fifteen thousand. Is that the discrepancy in what you originally asked for and what the manager came in at? Were those the two vehicles?
The first, the international I did request and, and, and the town manager did cut that one. And I think he also cut, um, another Parks Maintenance mower and perhaps one of their, another dump truck. But the John Deere that's six ninety is actually an excavator that- the John Deere that's 690 is actually an excavator that we don't use a lot of. So it's just, it's not, you know, it's not something we're going to be replacing anytime soon. I mean, it runs fine and, you know, when we needed it, it's there.
So the international, what does that do? And how are you dumping a lot of money into that one as well for repairs?
I let Bob answer that question about the repairs, but it's, it's a triaxle dump truck. But Bob, are we putting a lot of money into that one?
That one, that one we are seeing, I'll say a less than average amount of repairs to it. That, that is what I would classify as old iron. That and the excavator, those things, if, if you remember your parents' old cars, you know, the bumpers were a quarter inch thick and you can bang into something and nothing's going to happen to them. So there's a lot of material on those units. And, and both the nineteen eighty seven John Deere excavator and the international, we have because we knew it would be very difficult to get it replaced, we've actually done some refurbishment work on those. So on the excavator, probably I'll say between eight and 10 years ago, we actually went through and put new injectors on the motor. We replaced some body panels on it. We had the unit painted. So that one has essentially received a new life. The same thing with the international triaxle, that, that is old iron. It's just steady and reliable. And we did same thing probably five years ago, we replaced the body on that. So although the, the chassis and, you know, the engine and transmission are essentially same, we, we replaced the body to get a few more years out of that.
Okay, you're, you are absolutely right. They just don't make things like they used to.
Thank you.
And I appreciate all that you, you put into these to try and keep them up and going. I mean, eighty seven, that's a long time ago. I graduated high school that year. My gosh. So how about the police patrol vehicles? There, we have some that are probably four years, they, four years ago, they should have been replaced. How is that, that the police fleet doing as well?
The police we bought, not last year, but the year before, we bought of quite a few cars for them. And we took, you know, it'd take a couple of years off and then next year we'll probably be back with some more police cars. Isn't that correct, Bob?
Yeah, just so you know, in the past five years, and obviously being a little jaded with public works. But in the past five years, we purchased almost 20 police vehicles. So our hope last year was since we had just bought six of them for them in 2020, that we would be able to, actually this list we're presenting this year is the exact same list we presented last year. Essentially they got cut. So we were hoping to be able to take a year off of police cars since we just had them pretty much refreshed and up to snuff. And then we ended up not being able to purchase anything last year. So we're trying one more year to get these central vehicles in. And then I know next year the police are going to creep back in and we'll go back into, you know, full force, making sure they're up on the road. But those vehicles, they, they have new vehicles now. The Crown Victorias are gone. Now they're running an all wheel drive Explorer. And they've been very reliable for them. They're getting a lot more use out of them and a lot more overall functionality for them. When those first came in, you know, they had that mix of the new cars and the old Crown Victorias and some were getting driven more than others. And now they have a pretty much standardized for fleet of vehicles and they're getting good even use and they're, they're performing very well for us.
Oh, well, that's good to hear. Well, thanks for giving me that information. And thank you for all you do. And I'm thankful for you keeping our fleet floating and is there any, are you seeing any more issues? My final question, are you seeing any more issues with, I think it's the catalytic converters being stolen? Are we seeing any more of those issues after what had happened at the senior center?
So those issues, and I don't know how much you guys have been exposed to it, but essentially Waterford and East Lime Senior Centers both got hit as well, as well as the U-Haul up the street across from Walmart. The thing is, these vehicles, the senior center vehicles and the U-Haul vehicles are obviously lifted up off the ground. They're very easy for a person to get underneath the vehicle and hide if another car comes by. There's room to work underneath there. So that's why these vehicles are the target. They're, they're parked in groups. You know, that doesn't help. Also, if you look, if you could look underneath your car, I mean, that catalytic converter is wedged up in there. There's nowhere, there's no room to work underneath there. There's no place to hide if another car drives by. So that's why these bigger vehicles are more the target. Apparently East Lime reap had their catalytic converter stolen, replaced them, parked them in the exact same spot they were parked before, and they were stolen again. Because our senior center isn't necessarily fully up to operational. When, once we've replaced the catalytic converters up here, we kept the senior vans back in our back lot down here. And that back lot is locked. Obviously you're close to the police station. Now, once they open up and begin and resume normal operation, you know, there may be some change that maybe they want them back closer to them or not. I don't know. But in the meantime, I prefer to keep them under my eye back here. Because some of, a couple of those catalytic converters are almost $800 a piece.
Yeah, I don't blame you. They are quite expensive and, and there's no way to put like a guard on them at all, right?
Well, they do make an aftermarket panel. It's, it's really kind of like a skid shield that you could put underneath there and put special tamper proof bolts. You know, if, if those things are worth as much money as they are, the people are going to find a way to get them. But there were, there certainly are things that we can do. So it's not an, as easy a target as they are otherwise.
All right. Well, thanks for the info. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Council Board lawn.
I'll never look at catalytic converters ever the same again. As a part. I'm looking at the, thanks for this budget and we definitely need to keep up with our vehicles and I fully support that. Um, but I do think that the increase is quite high, but it also is indicative to last year doing nothing. So my one question of just, I'm kind of just want to understand from my notes. For the board of ed, we fund their maintenance on their vehicles.
So what happens is the board of ed comes in and we service their vehicle and we charge them essentially what we call an outside labor rate, which is $50 an hour. So they pay $50 an hour, they pay a parts, they pay the parts and also a small markup on the parts. And when, at the end of the month, we send them a bill, they send the money back and, and accounting puts that money essentially reimburses us and puts that money back into our accounts.
And the vehicles are owned by them?
The vehicles are owned and titled in the board of ed's name. That's correct.
All right. So we just support them with the maintenance and then they pay their market rate or whatever to do that. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
All right, seeing no other hands, we will vote on account sixty forty in the amount of one million, one hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. And that leads us to the end of our accounts for this evening. We will recess. Take a motion to recess until Wednesday, April 21st at 6:00 PM.
I moved.
Is there a second? Second, I think that was Franco. The sounds are odd. Moved by Aubrey, seconded by Franco to recess until Wednesday, April 21st. All those in favor of recessing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, so moved unanimously. We are in recess as of 7:20 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, John.
Bye.
Oh, you got it.